We will now reconvene the special city council meeting. Ms. City Attorney, do we have anything to report?
There was one item on the closed session agenda. The city council received and filed a report from its labor negotiators, and that ends the closed session report.
Thank you. Before I begin the regular city council meeting, I would like to inform members of the public that I will be taking public comment for non-agenda public comment and for items on the agenda via teleconference line. Those wishing to address the city council may call 562-299-6622 when I make that announcement. Persons speaking are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Your comments will be recorded and you will be advised when your time has ended. Once your time has ended, the call will be immediately disconnected. For those who have submitted their comments via email, your comments will be read into the record at the appropriate times during the meeting, and no additional public comment will be permitted via teleconference. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Mayor, before I call the role, I would like to inform members of the public that Councilmember Ashton is participating in this council meeting via teleconference. Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Saab?
Here.
Mayor Protem Prometa?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present. I would now like to have Councilmember Rodriguez do the invocation for us.
Can I ask everyone to please rise? Heavenly Father, we invite you here, Lord. We invite you at this time and these trying times, Lord, throughout this world. Lord, we pray for your love and your grace, Lord. We pray for your people. Lord, we pray you guide us and guard us and watch over us, Lord. We pray for this pandemic, Lord, that there's a remedy quickly. We pray for those that are suffering. We pray for those families that are suffering the loss of their family members. Lord, go before us tonight. Meet us here, go before us, and watch over us, Lord. Help us do the city's work in Jesus' name. Amen.
I would now like to ask Mayor Protem Claudio Prometa to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If we can please put our hand over our heart, let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is now time for city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports. And I will start off with, to my far left, with Councilmember Alex Saab.
Madam Mayor, welcome, everyone. You know, these are trying times and, you know, I want everybody to know that, you know, we're obviously all concerned about the numbers and we know what's going on here in Southern California and specifically Downey. But, you know, as Mayor Protem said a little bit earlier in the back, you know, things are going to get better. They're going to improve. We just have to keep pushing forward and make sure that we all do our part and do the bare minimum, wear our masks and social distancing and whatnot. Last week, we had the opportunity to celebrate the reopening of Furman Park. Furman Park is the second busiest park in our city. And I got to tell you, it looks, it looks great. If you haven't had a chance, I invite you to go out there. There's some additional parking spaces that were added. There was a tennis court, basketball court was redone, the grass, new irrigation system. Irrigation system was about 50, 60 years old and it's completely redone. And we did great new green space and some flower areas. And we did the buildings, and it just, it just looks great. So if you have an opportunity, I invite you to go out there. And specifically, also, if you notice, there's a new art piece in the front, which is the rocket, which was designed and done by two local artists. They did just a great job. So that just, for those who didn't grow up in Downey, the history behind that, there used to be a big rocket ship there where kids used to go and play. And obviously, it was removed years ago. But this kind of just gives people a little bit of a sense of the history of that park and of our community, the rich space history that we have here in our community. So I just want to thank everyone involved. I know John Oskwe was, you know, super involved in that and just everyone across the board, city manager, everybody, just did a phenomenal job. So thank you for that. Speaking of, well, I'll get to it in a second. If you've noticed, if you haven't driven to the downtown, you'll see there's some additions to some of the local restaurants. That was something that we encouraged and we voted on a few meetings ago. So you'll start to see a few restaurants adding some more outdoor eating area space. And I think it's a, it's a great addition. And anything that we can help the businesses get through this, we know that everyone is struggling right now. And, you know, it's just one of those things that we have to go through it. For staff, it kind of reverts back to the tennis court issue from a park. Recently, I was brought to my attention, some cities, particularly Cerritos, and I think Long Beach has an app that allows people to be able to reserve their tennis courts and actually some of the other sports facilities or parks and rec facilities that they can do on an app. And I looked at the Cerritos app and actually it was really pretty good. It was nice and clean. I think they charge the same as we do to reserve it. And it was just, I think it'd be something that, you know, if we can take a look at and maybe, I know our people here in IT do a great job. Maybe they can take a look at that and come back with us for something that is comparable to the Cerritos one. That would be great. I know I've, I've heard some people, you know, wanting to call and reserve, and you have to go through the phone tree. And it just, you know, takes a lot of man hours there sometimes. I think if we can maybe just be a little more efficient with an app, I think that would be a great thing. And that concludes my comments. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mayor Protem Claudio Prometa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. And I do want to welcome Michael Calvert from Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for joining us tonight, as well as Dorothy Pemberton, our community faithful volunteer. Thank you for joining us. And tonight, as Councilmember Saab indicated, we continue to move forward in spite of the great challenges that as a nation, as a state, and certainly as a city, we are facing. I wanted to especially bring to your attention, and I know, Madam Mayor, you did a great job last week in your mayor video informing our residents of all of the things that this city has done in terms of the COVID-19 response. And so again, I wanted to, I'm not going to say all of the things that have been done. I will point people to the social media platform, the City of Downey Government Agency and your post. But I do want to tell the community and those that are joining us via YouTube that this city has been very proactive. Again, this is the 100-year-old pandemic. And we are not the city of Los Angeles. We don't have 3 million people. And yet, with the 113,000 residents and with the staff that we have over the last several months, we have done as much as we can to conduct wellness checks for our seniors. 380, 1,262 households have been served a free meal as part of the distribution event in partnership with LA County and LA Food Bank. Over 1,675 meals have been provided to 100 seniors per week. And over 3,000 personal protective equipment and sanitation supplies were purchased for our first responders and frontline employees. Now, in terms of what have we done for our residential and businesses? Well, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I think it's important that we, again, utilize this forum to inform our community and those attending in person and also via YouTube that there were 457 residential tenant applications that were received for the city's rental assistance program. And the, again, as a council, we worked together on passing the moratorium eviction that was implemented to help our residential and commercial tenants. We've had 17 restaurant applications received for the city's temporary outdoor dining program that helps restaurants restart their business and stay in compliance with LA County health orders. There's also, people ask, what have you done for public outreach? And keeping in mind that as a city, you know, we, we are trying to push as much information as possible, realizing that not every single member of our community is on, on social media, but utilizing the social media outlets that we have. There has been, in terms of the public outreach campaign, 2,160 social media posts on city social media channels. We have had 19 press releases. We probably need to close the side door. We've had 1,690 calls answered here at the city regarding the city coronavirus hotline. We have one dedicated website that continues to be updated with sometimes daily updates. If the governor or the LA County Public Health individuals do updates, the staff does the very best. Either Vanya or Judy do what they can to be able to update that information. And our Madam Mayor has had 12 mayor videos to update our community. So having said all this, I think it is important to know that we are doing what we can to keep our residents informed. Certainly, there continues to be a lot of information, and the information continues to be fluid. As we continue with this pandemic, things will continue to shift and change. And I think we all want to return to the pre-COVID lives that we had enjoyed. But as has been said, we need to continue to work together. And as far as the masks, if we are practicing the social distancing and as we speak without shouting, it is okay for me to take off my mask and sit here and speak on this, on this microphone. There is no type of injury to anybody around me in that manner. I also want to let people know that we were very appreciative of the community coming together. And again, knowing that we are facing volatile times, Downey continues to be a united community in spite of maybe a handful of people that continue to be loud around us. Our community came together last week to say thank you to our police department for the work that they do. And we are very grateful for that. We had about 150 vehicles from community residents that took part on that community parade. And we were very delighted that the residents came together and they decided to do this, to thank our law enforcement agency for what they do in terms of keeping our community safe. There is a couple of things that I do have for staff. And there is, I received several complaints from residents regarding, it looks like there's a property dialysis center on Florence and Downey that is currently on sale. And there has been quite a bit of homeless activity that people living in surrounding area has witnessed. And as a result, there is excessive debris and trash. And they are afraid that because there's, it looks like over the last several days, especially after 4th of July, there was a couple of attempts to spark a fire in that particular location. So if staff can please look into that. Also, I would like to direct the staff to look into the possibility of closing Downey Avenue between Second and Third Street to allow for pedestrian traffic and to allow for additional room, realizing that while we don't have a tremendous amount of businesses there, that area between Second and Third is the area that we have on Saturday mornings for our farmer's market. And again, in light of the uncertainty of the situation we have with a COVID response, allowing the closure of that particular block in downtown Downey, it would, you know, allow for more pedestrian activity and certainly increase the space for those restaurants that may be having some limitations coming out and serving food outside. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Councilmember Sean Ashton.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I hope everyone's doing safe during these unprecedented times. Just please remember to wear your face masks, keep your social distancing protocols up. Just make sure that you're being safe. A couple items for staff. You know, during this time, I find myself kind of doing a little bit more reading, a little bit more Netflix watching. But a couple of things that I saw while doing all that over the past couple of weeks. So I read an article in the, it goes to Whittier Daily News in regards to what Whittier is doing in relation to fireworks and how they're going after the launching of illegal fireworks. I know 4th of July is over, but, you know, we still have people who are launching them, you know, pretty regularly, especially on the weekends, but some serious, you know, heavy-duty firepower. I mean, not just your pickle of Pete type of things, but really some serious, you know, illegal fireworks. And it was an article where they talked about being able to give a citation to the homeowner or for people that are launching fireworks on that property. So, you know, I'd like to have city staff look into seeing if that's something that we can do here in the city of Downey. Because I think, you know, that this issue, granted, it's not just a Downey issue. It's a regional issue. But if we start looking at different ways to enforce what we have, I'm hoping that we can put a dent in some of this. So that was one thing. And then one more item that I saw, was watching a show on Netflix in relation to what we can do to help our community. And one thing that they were, a couple of different locations, but one location, they were in Paris. And one thing that I saw in Paris that they were doing was they had drinking stations out for everyone. And considering our water is some of the best water in the area, I think that'd be a good thing to maybe, in the downtown area, put like hydration stations where people can fill their water bottles up. You know, basically just using our Downey tap water that's not treated with any pesticides or anything. It's clean, pure drinking water. And I think that's a good way to encourage people to not use the plastic bottles and to carry your own bottle around. And by doing that, we can encourage people to, you know, think about, you know, the future of our environment and make it better for our children, hopefully. And then, well, I guess that's enough for now. I don't want to overload staff. So I'll end it with that. But thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Rick Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to sit in this seat. I've got just a few things to report out from our last council meeting. This Monday, we actually were able to have our clergy council reassemble through a Zoom meeting. It was a very effective meeting for our clergy council only because we were able to celebrate the moving forward of that housing, affordable housing project for our veterans on the Holiday Island, Downey border. And so I'm really excited about that. And it was great to see about 30 people participated in our Zoom clergy council meeting. I'm looking forward to doing the same thing with the Downey Care Collaborative and certain, in our veterans group that we can, instead of meeting in person, we can now meet on Zoom. As Mayor Protem Prometa mentioned earlier about our parade for Downey PD, you know, I'm a father of a cop. I couldn't be more proud of my son and our police department. And to see 150 people like this on their own time coming out to say thank you, it was very, very heartwarming. And so Chief, I want to really echo that sentiment from our, our community. We really value you guys, so. And speaking of that, I have a friend of mine in the audience, Sam, if I properly pronounce your name right, Japanathan. He's a friend of mine, retired ship captain. And he, Sam and I, we meet all during the week. But we meet with two other guys, two other chaplains we meet. And we dine at local Downey restaurants. And we dine at Downey restaurants. We will promote their business. We sit outside. We actually have the ability to enjoy their food, promote their business, and help them stay in business during this pandemic time. And so I would encourage those of you who have a few friends or you want to join us, it'll usually be Thursday or Friday. We take turns buying lunch for each other. And we only eat in a Downey restaurant, and we promote it on social media. So it's a great way to help our business community kind of stay, stay in business. A couple of weeks back, July 4th, the week of July 4th, our council was able to get in front of our home decoration heroes, the people that even during this pandemic time, they still found the time to decorate their home with patriotic decorations through our parking rec. And J.C. did a wonderful job with that. And so we were able to go out there, take pictures with them, and celebrate the 4th of July idea, the concept of 4th of July, not really just blowing it by like we have done so many other things the past 90 days. But we were able to actually celebrate our 4th of July with our residents. And then lastly, just for staff real quick, I mentioned this earlier, but although we can take a look at the street vendors on Imperial Highway and Paramount, I think the more we allow it, it's just going to get worse and worse. So if we, and these are usually on Saturdays and Sundays in front of the Art Market on Paramount and Imperial Highway. If we just look at that. That's it, Madam Mayor. I'll owe you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today at our council meeting. I hope everybody had a happy 4th of July. I know this year it was celebrated a little different than other years. But as was mentioned, we did, did recognize those individuals who decorated their homes for 4th of July. We also had a special ceremony with Courage Forward outside, thanking those who served our great country and allow us to have the freedoms that we enjoy, that we get to enjoy. I also want to echo the sentiments about the community parade that was held. I want to thank Candy from Positively Downey, the Facebook page. She's the one that organized this parade. And also The Olive for donating food to Downey PD. So these are amazing individuals who were able to get so many people within the community together to thank our officers. So to Chief and to thank, to our officers, please thank them on behalf of us and the community of Downey. Thank you. And as was mentioned, our numbers, our COVID numbers are rising. I always wear my mask when I'm out in public. Of course, here during the dais in our council meeting, it becomes a little more difficult because wearing a mask will not allow me to be heard by everyone. So that's important for me, for you, to be able to hear what I have to say. But when you are out in public, and especially when you can't maintain that social, six-foot social distancing, I highly, highly recommend that you wear your mask because only if we all work together can we get this under control. So it's something that we all need to do, and we all need to do a better job at that. Because as you've seen, we have been slowly closing some establishments. And I would hate to see further closures, which would affect our business owners and also the residents that work at these businesses. So I, again, reiterate, please, wear your mask when out in public. Also, I wanted to see if maybe we can get a follow-up as to any, how we can help our restaurants closing off Downey Avenue. Maybe we can do a special presentation. But my concern is our, our business owners off of Downey Avenue as well. And I will continue doing my weekly videos. I did a couple last week, and I will continue to do so because keeping the community informed as to everything that we have available, all the resources that we have available here in our city is of utmost importance, especially during these difficult times. All right, so let's jump into some presentations. And since I will be going down, I'm going to wear my mask.
Hopefully, you can all hear me. But the first is a proclamation. July is Parks Make Life Better Month. So for this presentation, I would like to call up Dorothy Pemberton, Chair of the Recreation and Community Services Commission to assist.
I've been on the Park and Rec Commission for a few years. Had been also maybe 20 years ago as a lifelong resident. I enjoy all the parks that we have, and especially with the Measure S and the revitalization of so many. It's a great time to be on this committee, and I look forward to giving my advice, my suggestions, and just overseeing to make it a better place.
I'll have to take off my glasses for this, but I have here before me a proclamation. Parks Make Life Better Month. This resolution recognizes the importance of access to local parks, recreation trails, open space, and facilities as of despite for all Californians impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We therefore declare the month of July 2020 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by providing frontline jobs, childcare for the essential workforce, and promoting community revitalization. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through engaging virtual and physical, this is really hard, virtual and physically distanced programs, dynamic online events, and new learning opportunities designed to keep families active while stay-at-home orders are in place and beyond. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation support human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, and aesthetics and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and facilitating conversations and services in order that our communities may heal both physically and emotionally. And whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives that afforded in their recreational opportunities. And whereas California Park and Recreation Society has released a statewide public awareness campaign, Parks Make Life Better, to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs, and services. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the citizens of the city of Downey recognize the importance of access to local parks, trails, open space, facilities for the health, wellness, development, inspiration, and safety of all Californians. And be it further resolved that we declare the month of July 2020 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Now, therefore, it is resolved that I, Blanca Pacheco, Mayor of the City of Downey, do hereby announce and proclaim the month of July 2020 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the city of Downey and to urge all its citizens to use and enjoy its parks, open spaces, facilities, and recreation opportunities. Signed by me, Mayor Downey.
Can you read it again, Madam Mayor? Can you read it again, Madam Mayor?
Next up, we have the recognition to the City of Downey from the Office of the Secretary of National Defense. I will call upon James McQueen, Director of HR, and Delfino Kunsugi, Director of Public Works, to assist me on this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This award was received by the city by the Office of the Secretary of Defense by being designated as a patriotic employer. And this award was received specifically for contributing to the national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Forces. One of the things about this award that makes it especially noteworthy, though, is the fact that the city was nominated for it by one of our own employees, Mr. George Delatorre, who's an employee in our Public Works Department. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Delfino Kunsugi, our Public Works Director, who will tell you a little bit about George.
Thank you very much, James. So I guess because George Delatorre is the one who nominated us, and he's actually the one serving in the Reserve Program. So it's only fitting that we honor him tonight. So George Delatorre is a maintenance lead worker in the Public Works Department. He has been with the City of Downey since 1997, so that's more than 22 years now. George is a tremendous asset to the department. Over his 22-year career in the city, although his main responsibilities have been mainly in park maintenance, he's also known to be a jack of all trades. He is an expert tree trimmer. He is the main man when it comes to irrigation repairs. In fact, he was the only one who could figure out the antiquated hydraulic irrigation system at Furman Park before it was recently replaced. And he can also design and construct landscaping and hardscaping projects. Over the last two years, since I have been here in Downey, George has been involved in a number of projects, including hardscaping and landscaping of the medians on Florence Avenue, where the Downey Entry Monument sign is located and along Paramount Boulevard south of Imperial Highway. George joined the Navy Reserve Program in 2002 and served in both Iraq and Afghanistan. He worked his way to the rank of Petty Officer First Class. He currently serves in the Navy's Construction Battalion, more famously known as the Seabees. Just like here in Downey, his resourcefulness and creativity has made him a valuable asset to the Navy Reserve Program. So on behalf of the city, I would like to thank George for nominating us for this prestigious award.
Is George here?
Yes.
Where's George?
No, right now he is serving.
Oh, he's serving.
No, he's overseas.
Wow. That's awesome. Sure.
We are now going to do a couple of things out of order. We will start off with the non-agenda public comment. Now is the time for non-agenda public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding non-agenda public comment may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Before we begin the non-agenda public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you are participating telephonically. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council on issues that are within the city's jurisdiction. Since we are under the federal, state, and local emergency declaration in Los Angeles County, safer at work, and in the community order, I will limit the non-agenda public comment period to 30 minutes pursuant to Downey Municipal Code Section 2105, Section G. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone?
We do not, Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, do we have, have we received any written correspondence on non-agenda items to be read into the record?
Yes, we have one, Mayor. This email is from Sage Calderon. My name is Sage. The last speaker you shut down from speaking for speaking off-topic, but the person spewing the N-word is not off-topic. Are you racist? Serious question. That is all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Members of the audience who wish to address the council regarding non-agenda public comment may now come forward.
Well, it's apparent that violations of the First, Fifth, Fourteenth Amendment, and Article Section 2 of the California Constitution regarding enforcement of unconstitutional rules of decorum. And it began in the eyes of the courts, United States versus Bagdad Zarian. His unreasonable taking of content. When he applied the words, it does not convey the notion that he had intent to shoot the nig. His expression was imperative that some unknown third party should take violent action. Now, what I'm saying here is that MLB, Brown Lives Matter like me, are constantly under the microscope of these fucking white nigger politicians who abuse their authority like in Los Angeles, starting with Mitchell Englander and Jose Wezar that pushed me into the City of Downey and forced me to live in poverty as they tried to illegally arrest me and detain me for a year of jail because I'm black and proud. But now you're hearing the testimony before the federal courthouse. Mitchell Englander will do five to three years, and that fucking Sacateca wetback, Jose Wezar, is doing 20 or less. But his turn is coming in the courts of July 31st because that pussy didn't want to show up on Monday, the 20th, so that I could take his picture. That little pussy politician who pushed me out of my community as an advocate, simply defending the rights of veterans and those disabled people and the homeless population that we continue to discriminate against. You 40th District elected official, Roybo Aldert, you bitch. So you get on the ball and protect the citizens of this country, of this state, because we're tired of the lockdowns. We're tired of being shut up and shut down by that fucking faggot from Pelosi's family, Gavin Newsom. Either you wear a mask or you don't wear a mask. Either you apply by the rules or you don't apply the rules. It's a pattern in practice where you fucking retards don't follow your own rules and regulations and policy. It's time to learn from those who are professionals. Wear the fucking mask at all times. And if you want to fucking die, take it off and breathe. I worked at County USC with AIDS patients when AIDS was high and not low. So I understand the issue. No bid, no bid. Fuck you, Eric Garcetti.
Please sit down. We're going to clean the podium for you. Is it a little cold in here for you? Okay, let's put it down. Can we, can you? It's a little cold in here. You can come forward, and we'll, we'll fix the cooling. It's a little cold in here.
Little, little humor. First of all, let's thank the City Council for the placement of that wreath on July the 4th weekend. That really brought honor to all of us who have given our lives to this country since the Revolutionary War to the present day. Lee Squire, Vietnam veteran, member of the American Legion, civil rights advocate. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and we, the people of the City of Downey, subject for law and order, for community, local policing, and for country, US military, defenders of the United States Constitution. All lives matter. I do this presentation in memory and honor of Ricky Galvez, community, for community, Downey, of city, police officer, and for country, United States Marine Corps reservist. Within local policing, our members who are US military veterans, and we veterans need to speak up against attacks of local policing. For these are attacks against our members, who are also members of the military veterans' family. To the City Council, for courage for standing up for the Downey police officers, to the Downey police officers for courage to defend law and order for our community. To we, the people, for car parade to support the Downey PD and honor veterans for exercising freedoms in the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, freedom of speech, freedom of expression, and freedom of peaceful protest and assembly. May God bless America, may God bless the United States military, and may God bless local policing and committees around and across America. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and again, thank you for your service. Anybody else wishing to speak? Is there a second? Okay, we will now close the public comment. Next up, we will be doing the administrative report, which is item number 18, Review of Measure S Projects. City Manager Levas, do we have somebody who will be providing us a report?
Madam Mayor, our Assistant City Manager, John Oskwe, will give you a briefing on that. Before we get started, I do want to echo some of the words that Councilmember Sob said about the parks. Furman was open just on July 7th, I believe it was. But truly, given what's going on, given the fact that we've been able to open so many parks and fire stations and do the things that we do are a testament to the council and their leadership, and specifically to Mr. Oskwe for spearheading many of these activities, and to the department heads who have worked hard in their respective departments to make sure that these particular projects get done. So with that, Mr. Oskwe, can you please go ahead and begin your presentation, please?
Thank you very much, City Manager Levas. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for providing the opportunity to, for me to be before you tonight to provide you with an update, status update with regards to the Measure S projects. Madam Mayor, we are not a small city, but have the feel of a small town, where family values are cherished, our citizens are civic duty-minded, they are engaged, and more importantly, they have full trust in their government. If you recall, when we were in the early stages of Measure S getting ready and doing, during the planning phase, we conducted a public survey. The results were overwhelming for us and for the experts. Over 80% of the citizens in Downey were approving the way that city government conducts itself. The surveyor who does many of these for many communities across the nation just simply told us, this is unbelievable, we haven't seen anything like this. If I recall correctly, it was in 80s. And the approval rating for our police department and fire department were high 80s. Again, overwhelming results, full support of the community behind the City Council and the city government.
For point of reference, when poll takers take their trust in local government, anything successful is anything 50 plus one. So if you're at 50%, you're doing a good job. When we took that survey, the council and trust in government was in the 80s. And I believe that police and fire were close to 90, if not at 90%. So.
It was precisely because of that, and the partnership between the city government and our citizens, that under the leadership of the City Council, Measure S was conceived in 2016 to essentially maintain and enhance public safety. You have seen the results of that, our citizens have seen the results of that in the last three or four years. And also to improve our city parks and facilities to provide opportunities for enhanced recreation activities and use of city facilities. In the last four months, just like anybody else, four or five months, we have had the challenge of dealing with COVID-19. Had this series of events has pushed things out of order a bit. We haven't been able, as it is our practice, to celebrate our achievements with our community. You witnessed that in the early phases of completing projects such as Apollo Park, Independence Park. We had the opportunity to share the moment with the community. There were wonderful events. Regretfully, we have not been able to do that recently. Nonetheless, what I wanted to do is to present you an update because mostly this update, pictures, and the pictures speak a thousand words. So I wanted to share that with you and with our, with our citizens. Again, as you recall, in 2016, we started the process, actually earlier than that, in 2015, 16, the thought was processed, was conceived. And in 2016 November, Measure S, thanks to the citizens of Downey, was passed. So it took us about a year of preparation to secure the funding for the projects. And in 2018, in April, in earnest, we started the early phases of the projects, which is essentially the design. Typically, the design for city parks and city facilities takes about a year, a little over a year. We needed to condense that into six to nine months. Reason being that as part of the, as part of our bond proceeds, one of the caveats was that we're going to finish the program in three years. So we have to be done by the end of, substantially done by the end of December 2020, which we are absolutely on our way to achieve that goal. And then in 2019, just last year, just a little over last year, in April, we started the construction of the first park. Apollo and Dennis the Menace were the first two parks that we started. This is a status update. Again, in April, May of last year, we started construction. And Madam Mayor, I am happy to report to you that by February 2021 will be done. The last two projects that are going to get done are fire station number two and fire station number four, modernization and expansion projects. Now, mind you that as a result of COVID-19, we had about a three to four months impact to our projects. That's why our initial date of completion date of September was pushed back a bit. Nonetheless, we are way on our, we are well on our way to complete the projects on target. As you could see on the right side, all the parks that are designated were 100% done. Wilderness Park, we're not going to open that because a big portion of the park is still under construction as a separate program, not a Measure S project. It's a grant program, restoration of the ponds. So because these two are in, they are connected to one another, we cannot open one park without allowing the other to be under construction. Too much of a risk for public to be there while the other construction activity, heavy construction activity is going on. Too much of a risk for public to be there while the other construction activity, heavy construction activity is going on. As you know, Fire Stations Number One and Number Three are 100% completed. Our firefighters and other personnel have been enjoying that for the last two or three months. Hopefully, Fire Station Number Two and Four will start construction in August. The library is about 75% complete with the projected completion date of October 2020, just about two or three months from now. Our Civic Center complex, what we did, a few projects here, the Civic Theater, Courtyard and Plaza, which is roughly about 97% done, just the finishing touches, and going to the state inspectors to get the permit for the elevator. The firefighter memorial, I'm very happy to please, and pleased to, to report to you that Fire Chief got a status for the art piece to be arriving. It's being shipped, Chief, right? Friday, and hopefully we'll have it here soon and we'll install it. And that will be the completion, long overdue firefighter memorial. Library café shade structure, it's primarily done, the last finishing touches, which is enhancement of the surrounding landscaping and installing lightings will be completed soon. And of course, the police department upgrades in their locker rooms and the showers and some of the other improvements that we did at that station is 100% complete. Fire Station Number One, this is before, one-story building. As you know, the challenge for our stations is that real estate is rather limited. So in order to expand the buildings, with the exception of Fire Station Number Two, the rest of them, we had to go vertical because simply there was no room to go horizontal. And this is the after picture. This is a real picture of Fire Station Number One. You have toured the facility, I believe. You know that the living quarters are all housed in the second story. And the functional portion or the operational portion of the building is conducted from the first story. Improvements included new single occupancy dorm rooms. As you know, in the past, they had common areas for sleeping quarters and common locker rooms. Now we have new showers that are two rooms to one ratio, meaning each two room shares one fantastic looking restroom and shower facility. Before, it was just one large shower for everyone. And the new modernized support spaces, including the exercise room, dayroom, kitchen, separate dining area. One of the things that we kept just pushing back and pushing back because the funds were not available, at least for the last 10 years that have been in here, was a paving area at Station Number One. And we got the opportunity through this program to address that. Fire alarm interlock with HVAC units, state of the, state of the art, parking lot ADA improvements, and of course, a new dispatch center, state of the art dispatcher. We got new equipment, thanks again to Measure S, new communication equipment, new communication equipment, requires new antennas and new operational equipment. And this is our fantastic new looking dispatch center. Fire Station Number Three, again, a very small facility, I believe about 4,000, 4,200 square feet before we, before the expansion. One-story building, very tight quarters and not functional at all. These are some of the before pictures. You will notice that in the app bay to the top left, the kind of, the kind of situation that existed before. You could see a typical shared dorm room with the lockers being in the, in the sleeping quarters. And this is a standard residential washer and dryer that was housed inside the shower facility. This is the facade of Fire Station Number Three. And these are some of the pictures of the existing improvements in there. Again, single occupancy dorm rooms, new shower locker rooms, modernized support spaces, and enlarged app bay, side paving was taken care of, and ADA improvements as well.
John, excuse me one second. I understand there's a problem with our YouTube streaming, they need to reboot it. If we can take a five-minute break, so they can reboot it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The Downey City Library, this is a before shot. As you know, that the library is under construction with a projected completion of October. These are a couple of pics before picture. Under construction currently, projected completion, again, in October. Completion cost about $7.5 million. It was completely gutted out. You haven't had an opportunity to see it yet, but it was completely gutted out. Four walls remained with good portions of the roofing and the mechanical system. Other than that, everything else is going to be brand new. All the areas are reconfigured, all the spaces, interior spaces are modernized with fantastic finishes in the ceiling, flooring, and the walls. We are using the color scheme as a weight finding. So each area, the adult rooms, the children, and the teen area, they're all going to have their own color patch. So as you walk into the library, if you're looking up, or you're looking down, or looking at the walls, you know where you are and where you're going to go to. The new Cormac Room is a beautiful facility with ceiling to floor, open doors that can be opened completely to create an all-open space into the library that gets into the library. And we definitely have upgraded the staff areas, private reading rooms, which we didn't have before. So these are all the upgrades that you're going to see by the end of October in the library. This is a picture of the front, one of the things that I've told you in the past we have done. We pushed the front of the library towards the parking lot to create more visibility and open the interior space with the outdoor space. As you enter the library, you are going to have two separate areas for the friends of the library. If you're entering, right-hand side will be friends of the library, and the left-hand side will be the information kiosk and checkout kiosk. Downey Theater Plaza and Courtyard, one of the challenges that we had was not being able to fully utilize the second floor of the theater building. So not only we wanted to be compliant with ADA, but we also wanted to enhance and be able to utilize that space. So placement of a, an elevator, outdoor elevator to serve the second story was a big portion of the project. We are going to complete the project and next month, we're putting some finishing touches on the landscaping. And again, waiting for the certification from the state for the elevator. As you could see, this is the elevator tower. We wanted to make it functional, but also to use it as a prominent feature of the building. So the top portion and the entire column is lit. You've probably noticed it at night, it's quite visible. So people, when you're looking from the downtown or other areas, you know that's a civic theater right there. And of course, one of the other features is the circular fountain, which is going to be a place for displaying the beautiful Trail of Life sculpture that we are going to be bringing in soon. One of the complaints that we always had is that the open space behind the library, where was a gathering place for our students and other members of the public, was not shaded enough. So this is the renovated space behind the library with the shaded structure. And again, the finishing touches will be additional landscaping and installing lights. So the lights are going to be on the columns, and they're going to shine up light against the fabric. So you see that night, there will be a beautiful display of color. Apollo Park before, the high, the high, the most highly used park facility in our city, Apollo Park. So the challenge was to maintain the heavily used sports fields. So in order to give us the ability to do that and also provide the ability to be, for our citizens, to play more in these fields, we changed them to a synthetic field. And you can see that here. I think it was a Saturday when we were all there and did the ribbon cutting. And I tell you, along with you, I took a step back. And when I saw those little kids jumping on the soccer field, start playing, that was just worth a million and more. So ADA improvements, picnic shelters, rubberized surfacing at the play area, parking lot lighting, new ball field lighting, and new furnishings, including the picnic tables, benches, trash receptacles. We also installed a separate trash enclosure structure. This is Apollo Park after. One of the features of the program is that we are trying to standardize our design for different components of our facilities. Our restrooms, they all look the same, our shade structures, they're going to be all the same. So this provides a uniform appearance of our parks, a theme, if you will. Not only that, but it also makes it easier to maintain because it's, again, standardized pallets for everything. Independence Park, this is the condition before. As you know, we resurfaced the tennis courts, rubberized surfacing at the playground. One of the things that we did, it was highly used. Mrs. Pemberton can say that, she's here, she's very active in that park. She would tell you that the restroom facilities were not adequate. Neither they were adequate nor they were ADA compliant. We built a completely new structure and converted the existing structure to the much-needed storage area. Dennis the Menace before, beautiful park, heavily used, needed attention. The old community room was not adequate. The restroom, the old restroom building was literally falling apart. So we knocked it completely out and build a brand-new facility that you see on the bottom right of your picture. New grass in the fields, upgraded irrigation system, and new picnic shelters along with concrete walkways for walking, for jogging and walking. And the side furnishings, again, brand new. Golden Park, again, one of those parks that hadn't been touched in years and years. The community room needed some attention. The restrooms were not adequate, not compliant. So we did a lot of work in the interior of the buildings and build and extended the bathrooms and made it ADA compliant. Brand-new shelters, there were not picnic shelters there. And resurfacing of the playground areas, as you could see in these pictures. Brand-new turf and irrigation system and much-needed parking lot improvement. We completely reconstructed the parking lot improvement. Basketball courts were resurfaced, softball fields were improved. And one of the things that came out as a survey when we were doing the master planning for the park, number one asked recreational activity by our citizens was walking/jogging trails. This park lacked that, and as part of this project, we had the opportunity to construct one. And these are some after pictures. Discovery Park Complex, the same issue, you know, for years and years, we had the complaints about the condition of the fields. Portion of the fields was built on essentially an underground reservoir for water. So there was not an opportunity for the grass to thrive. So the wisdom in here was to turn it into a synthetic field, not only to minimize the care and maintenance that is required, but also provide and maximize and optimize opportunity for our public to use the fields. So this. So this is the result of that. Brand-new soccer field, sports field in synthetic turf, brand-new irrigation system, and also a secondary field, which is natural turf. And you see that sign at night, really with the lights, uplights really shines, and it's beautiful. Furman Park, we were there last week. Councilmember Sob talked about, you know. It has turned to be one of my favorite parks after we got done with it. Just the creativity of the designer in landscaping the park itself, spacing, and you know, the amenities that were provided in here, the shade structures and all of that. Again, there were not adequate number of restrooms. So we expanded the existing restroom, pushed it out, built a new, brand-new building. ADA-compliant features were put in. And one of the other things that we did, there was not a natural connection between the west side of the park, the entrance of the west side, where the neighbors are, and the park itself. So we used that opportunity. We used a tree that was existing in there. The tree is probably sixty, seventy years old. Used that as an anchor to the entrance from the west side and built a circle around it and created that connectivity between that side of the park and the rest of it. And these are some shots from Furman after. The art piece, you could see that on the top-right corner that is displayed in the front of the park. Wilderness Park is a hundred percent done. Again, we're not going to open it because of obvious reasons, because it's under construction for the ponds. It needed a secondary bathroom facility, which we built, a brand-new bathroom facility to the west of the North Lake, around the pathway. New concrete, walking trails along with benches and new lighting. Also, the community room, the big community room. A lot of work was done inside of it, enhancing the bathrooms, enhancing the facility, changed all the finishes. We had to take care of some hazardous material in there. So as part of the construction, we took care of that. We are putting new refuse enclosure structures so people are not going to be looking at trash receptacles out everywhere, spread around in the parking lot while they're enjoying the park. This is some after pictures. You see that we took advantage and widened that connection between the community room structure and the North Lake by providing a larger set of steps. But you know, on the left side, what we did, we tried to be creative and create a sort of like an amphitheater, sitting area in there. So if there's a program that can utilize that space, and you can see a shot of the interior of the community room that is now enhanced with new lighting, new flooring, new paint, and other improvements. That's my presentation to you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you very much for allowing me to do that. I cannot thank the city council enough for its leadership. Without your leadership, none of this would have been possible. And of course, the citizen of Downey had made this possible. You know, I have to also thank city manager Levas for his guidance, the entire Downey team for supporting the program. Councilmember Sob, shout-out to you. He was a member of subcommittee that looked at the design, tweaked it, gave us pointers, pushed us in the right direction in order to be able to do this job. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
I appreciate that.
Great job, John.
Thank you. And also the members of the oversight, Measure S Oversight Committee. Pemberton is here as they have worked with us very closely to make sure that every dollar is stretched as much as possible to get as much as possible done and is done in the right way. So thank you very much for the opportunity, Madam Mayor.
Great job.
Thank you. Great job.
You know, one of the things, Yolanda, if I could mention, and this is just something, it's just because of the passing of Dave Gaffin. You know, Dave Gaffin was on that committee along, you know, with others. You know, I know that around the city, there's plaques around every elected official for the past sixty years, buildings and stuff like that. I really think it's presentable and suitable that we have, these plaques should recognize that subcommittee. Dave Gaffin, especially in the name of the people, they give their time. You know, they're not elected, they're chosen by us to represent us. I think it's important that, you know, we thank them in a little small piece. And Dave Gaffin, you know, he was a big piece of that.
You mean like the plaques on the, like the park up? What are those called? Commemorative plaques include their names in it?
I think so. Or maybe, I'm open to whatever, if you want to put a separate plaque for Measure S Oversight Committee, whatever you think is right. I just think having these people that are part of, giving their time up to help. I mean, let's face it, nobody likes a tax increase. And we sold the city, I know I did, sold the city on the idea of this half-cent sales tax being used. And you guys did exactly what we said. You used that tax money and built these beautiful parks and fire stations and police stations. So I think when we put that oversight committee together, we said, let's select people that would help us keep an eye on things and give their creative values, and they've done that, so.
My suggestion, if maybe next meeting, if I can have a subcommittee of the council so that we can define what that parameter is, you know, is it park commissioners, oversight? There's a number of folks that are involved. So we want to, you know, the list can get pretty large. So we want to make sure that we appropriately address those needs that the council wants us to do. So we'll put that on for the next meeting, and you guys can give us direction then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. I just wanted to echo my council members' colleagues, my colleagues' comments regarding the work that has been put in. And it's been a pretty arduous work and pretty intense over the last couple of years. And certainly during this year, this very trying, unprecedented year. And knowing that, again, it all goes back to this community. And while we may have a few loudmouths that are out there spewing misinformation about this community, it is so critical that as a council and as a community residents and those that are joining us via YouTube, that the community is informed and that we share this vital information. Because the city that we have, and I'm very adamant every time we have these gatherings, that those of us that are honored to sit in these chairs, our job and our duty is not only to serve this community and do it ethically, but our job is to protect this community. And we see what is happening in communities around us. And we also see those of us that have been in Downey for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. We know what we have. And the fact that thanks to the residents that passed Measure S and thanks to the people that have served in the Measure S Committee, we have these amazing parks that also bring, increase the value of our properties. And there are no cities around us that have, right now, the value and the infrastructure improvements that Downey has been so fortunate to have. And certainly amidst this pandemic where there are cities that are crippled financially and members are having to face very difficult financial decisions, we are certainly very fortunate and very blessed to be able to have this. And so, John, thank you for presenting this. And we look forward to those of you that are in attendance and certainly those that are joining us via YouTube to continue to share this information with the community. Because there might be a lot of people that only hear the loudmouths that spew misinformation. And so it is our job to protect our community from the lies and the misinformation that continues to be propagated with hate and division. And so we are here to protect that, and I just wanted to say thank you.
I just wanted also reiterate what was already mentioned. You know, this is wonderful what we're seeing in Downey. The park's amazing. But I just had one question. Are we going to be, I know we're having trouble with our YouTube streaming. Will this presentation also be available on our website? Or where can the public find this information?
Yes, as I understand, it's being recorded now and it'll be on our website.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments from my council colleagues? Seeing no other comments, I will now open this item up for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council regarding item number eighteen may now call our teleconference line at five six two two nine nine six six two two. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone regarding this item?
We do not, Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, do we have any written correspondence regarding this item to be read into the record?
We do not.
Members of the audience who wish to address the council regarding item number nineteen, number eighteen, this item, may now come forward.
Is there full trust in the bond and tax issues of Measure S? Are we winners or losers as taxpayers when our Measure S dollars are not extended to the fullest capacity to finish projects in a timely manner without a pattern and practice of criminal corruption? Why do I say that? Because I've noticed several parks are not completed. And I don't give a about the goddamn covey. Parks are good for people who suffer from disabilities to be out with their families, enjoying themselves as a family. To die together is to live together peacefully. But no, the challenge here is the full trust of fifty-one percent, as I heard from Mr. Levas, regarding the seventy-five percent of libraries and the wilderness park. So this eighty percent of nonsense, or as I call it, bullshit, is a significant portions that could not be understood by the public, that we are paying taxes up the ass for projects that we can't participate in. So I don't know where the hell Fromeda comes up with her ideas about people chanting out the doors. That's not a part of this meeting. We're here to do the people's work for the people who worked daily like my stupid ass for twenty years in one job and like you, Ashton, for those motherfuckers of LAUSD that don't want our children to learn First Amendment. And so you're hearing it today, an example. Long Beach judge told me, Herman, that symbolic symbol here and here reflects First Amendment. Wear it. But mind you, how far does a nigger want to go? And that's specifically what I told her. Being black isn't simple. Being black is intelligent. Brandenburg versus Ohio, Whitney versus California, David Salzburg, Zuma Dog versus the City Valley. And again, I feel like I because of my brown fucking skin and being retaliated by this racist fucking country from Gavin Newsom. Open our fucking parks and pay off the Measure S since you already gutted it, assholes.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Are there any other speakers regarding this item? Second, public comment closed.
Move to receiving file.
Is there a second? Okay, so ordered. We will now... We will now proceed over to the public hearing. We have one public hearing. Request for a zone change to rezone a portion of a property located at ninety-four thirty-two Telegraph Road from PB Parking Buffer to C two General Commercial. Introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Downey approving a zone change designation, PLN nineteen zero zero one six two for property located at nine four three two Telegraph Road, thereby converting the north forty-two feet of the property from PB Parking Buffer to C two General Commercial. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Can I have a motion a second to receiving file? So ordered by the mayor. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is a staff report that we provided by our city planner, Cristo Landoza.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Before you tonight is a request for a zone change for a property located at nine four three two Telegraph Road. The site was previously occupied by a used car dealership. All structures on the property are currently demolished and the site sits vacant at this time. That was completed as part of a lotline adjustment that was completed at the end of last year. The project site currently maintains two zoning classifications. If you'll see on the screen, the rear portion, a majority is Zone C two, which is General Commercial. The front portion is Zone PB Parking Buffer. On May twentieth, twenty twenty, the planning commission reviewed a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the zone change for the PB zone to make the entire site designated as C two. The reason we're here tonight is that in two thousand and eight, a comprehensive zoning code update eliminated the PB zone to reflect new development goals and standards that were adopted as part of that update. Although this zoning category and standards were eliminated, the zoning map still contains PB zones. The requested change tonight, to change from PB to C two, will eliminate the discontinued zone from the subject property and will result in a single zone designation of C two for the entire property. If approved, the zone change will allow for the development of a two-story medical office building. The building will provide horizontal and vertical features, as shown on the screen, to create a linear-inspired design common in modern architecture with varying planes as well as contrasting colors and materials. The new building will consist of stone, smooth stucco, large glass panes, intended to be a focal feature to enhance the aesthetic on Telegraph Road. The site will be provided with seventeen trees and a variety of shrubs and vines throughout the property along Telegraph Road to the north, west abutting the neighboring property and at the rear of the property. And again, staff is recommending at this point that the city council approve PLN one nine dash zero zero one nine one, a zone change request to designate the subject site as C two General Commercial. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
No, for me.
That PB, it has to be, I know it keeps coming back. It has to be project by project to eliminate that PB zone. You can't do just...
It does. It is, believe me, I'm newer with the city. I've been here about a year. And when this first came up, I did sort of question the same thing. Why haven't we done that? When looking into it a little bit closer, I realized that there's different notification requirements and a few other inconsistencies, so it does take a little more.
All right, thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Good job. I will now open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding the public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at five six two two nine nine six six two two. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers?
We do not, Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, do we have any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We didn't receive any, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to address the council regarding this matter may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing. Just a minute. You may now come forward.
Thank you, Mommy. Mommy Mayor, regarding this request for a zone change from P dash B to C two, I know what a C two is. I used to tell Ms. Barter and Janice Hahn, C for cunt, to the General Commercial District. And they used to tell me, you're right. That's what we're going to use it for. We're going to cut into the properties of the residential area and turn it into a commercial area so that the wetbacks like you, Herman, can move the fuck away and stay away. But as you hear... But as you hear, is it adequate to the size? Did you see it in the diagram where you're just supposed to steal the car parking, but it seems like you're going to push some people out of their rent control housing, which sounds like demolition time? But, again, who's going to accommodate the use or users permitted in the zone standard? Now, that's fancy jargon for just bullshit. Let's just get to the subject. They're going to take people out of our community to regulate it into a commercial area, the same way you've been doing it in the past, taking our land, Native American land, wetback land, Black Matter land, and Brown Lives Matter land away, because you want to see us living on the outskirts of the city and not living in our community, socializing with our inhabitants that we lived next to or for the last 10-plus years. So it's just a big scam. I really wish people had the balls to get up here and speak out against this, but they want to see change. I want to see reform. I want to say that shall the criminals report to jail with Jose Weezer and his fat wife?
Mr. Herman, on topic.
It is. It dealing with people in the community of development, who steal from other people simply to get away with it, like Jose Weezer and the FBI probe for commercial development, bunch of fucking thieves, that's what they are, and you know it. You know it, Mayor. Don't stick around those people, I'm telling you now. Englander, Jose Weezer, all fell under an FBI investigation for development.
Mr. Herman, this is your final warning.
This is a project of development, and the commissioners are fucking up our plans.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Move to close vote comment.
Second.
That's great. Move to approve the item as written.
Second.
There you go. Hey, Sean's back.
Been here the whole time.
Is there a motion, a second to introduce ordinance? I have a motion, I have a second. City Clerk Duarte, can you please take roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ashton.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sob.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Prometa.
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco. The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I will now proceed to the consent calendar. Now's the time for consent calendar items. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding consent calendar items may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone?
We do not, Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, have we received any written correspondence on consent calendar items to be read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we have an email for item number six, and the email is from Alexander Shirali. Regarding bid award to apparent first-place low bidder Hoffman Management and Construction, Inc., my name is Alex Shirali, and I am from Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc., and we recently came in as the second lowest bidder for the fire station number two and number four project. After protesting the first-place bid and providing our findings to the City of Downey, we were notified yesterday that our protest did not include merit. We are officially requesting an official review of Classic Engineering's protest of the first-place bid that is scheduled to be awarded to Hoffman Management and Construction, Inc. Classic Engineering was provided a copy of Hoffman's bid package and found multiple major issues with the bid package, and does not believe the City of Downey is currently exercising fair bid practices and extending an equal playing field to all bidders. Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc. feels that we have adequately provided factual proof to the City of Downey that has not been fairly considered or investigated completely to explain why Classic Engineering's findings are not valid. Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc. is only asking for all bidders to be judged with the same standards and to reflect fair and equal rights to all bidding companies for public works projects. Classic Engineering will consider reaching out to whatever higher governing body above the already contacted city employees if we feel our requests is continued to be ignored. Please do the right thing and provide factual, objective evidence why Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc.'s protest of the first-place bidder, Hoffman Management and Construction, is not adequate to deem the first-place bidder non-responsive. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the audience who wish to address the Council regarding consent calendar items
The sign, no bid. No bid. No bid.
Mr. Herman, please turn around.
No bid. Why is that? Why can't you allow other patrons from an outside city or the inner city participate in this bid? The fire station projects is an example of our park projects and our library projects, not completed. Thank you, Measure S, for fucking us for more taxes and bonds. And then I go into item seven, call 201-767-6050, Department of Justice Civil Rights in Washington, award a contract in the amount of $2 million for residential street pavement rehabilitation projects. Oh, Janice Hahn, you fucking cunt, I told you, I told you I want my streets fixed in Downey, and you're not doing the goddamn job for infrastructure. What are we going to do driving all these fucking potholes? Why aren't you fixing our streets, Janice Hahn? Where the fuck is the money? Someone's taking the money because our projects are still on backorder. Those receipts on why our shithole potholes are not patched up is the same shithole excuses I heard over and over and over from that fucking bitch Pelosi from San Francisco, although she has nothing to do with here in Downey or LA, except she's a cunt bitch related to Gavin Newsom, who doesn't send us money to fix our infrastructure.
Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, stay on topic.
We're paying taxes for infrastructure, we don't want streets repaved. We want you to use infrastructure to demonstrate that we want jobs, jobs in our community, and make Brown Lives Matter work. Niggers like me want to work, and we can't work if you don't let other bids at the lowest come in, so the contractor can hire us wetbacks to do the labor like the fucking nips, like all those motherfuckers here illegally wanting to work and live and survive this fucking pandemic holocaust. If we don't get the lowest bid, and we don't get the better worker and the quality of work, we're all going to hell. Fucking tired of your excuses on why the infrastructure in our community isn't repaired. Fix the fucking street, stop the pavement, stop the story slip, tear up the streets, and reconstruct our infrastructure. Goddamn, save America, Trump!
Close vote, second, please.
Thank you. Are there any Councilmembers that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
So, Madam Mayor, I need to, I'll be abstaining from item number seven, it's projects within 500 feet of my home, and item number 10, the projects within 500 feet of my rental property, 8533, 8535, 8539, Stewart and Gray.
Mayor, also, item number six is being pulled.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. Item number six will be pulled from the consent calendar and continued to the regular City Council meeting of July 28, 2020.
And I, Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from approving the minutes, the regular meeting of May 26, as I wasn't here.
Any other abstentions?
I'll be abstaining from item number seven, it's within 500 feet of my residence.
And I will be abstaining from item number eight, as my office is within 1,000 feet of this project.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? City Clerk Duarte, can we take roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Let me just go over the abstentions.
Okay.
I have Councilmember Rodriguez abstaining from items number seven and 10, Councilmember Sob abstaining from item number seven, Mayor Pacheco abstaining from item number eight, and Mayor Protem Prometa abstaining from item number two, the May 26, 2020 minutes. Councilmember Ashton.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sob.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Prometa.
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco.
Yes.
Consent calendar was approved unanimously.
Item number six.
Item number six being pulled and continued to the next regular Council meeting of July 28, 2020.
Thank you. Now's the time for staff member comments. City Manager Levas, do you have any comments?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any comments tonight.
Thank you. We will now adjourn the City Council meeting in memory of Specialist Vincent Sebastian Ibarra, 21, San Antonio, Texas, who was supporting Operation Freedom Sentinel, Specialist Vanessa Guillen, 20, Houston, Texas, Police Officer Anthony Dia, 26, Toledo, Ohio Police Department, killed in the line of duty, Beatrice Renteria, Riojando Elementary School employee, and Dave, David Gaffin, former Downey Mayor, and all lives affected by COVID-19. Meeting adjourned.